I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for Monday, July 14th, 2025, Flag Day. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, your nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would please call the roll of the members.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Denise Hoppe.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Rachel Holtein. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no minutes in tonight's package. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Seeing none, we will move with the agenda as presented, and we have one proclamation and a presentation. So I would like to invite Mary Hester to join me at the podium. Mary, how are you tonight? Mary is our staff liaison for...
Hannah.
...Wheat Ridge. I knew that from the beginning. It's always good to have a reminder. I'm really pleased to make a proclamation. Tonight is the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species, whose multi-generation migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas both the Western and Eastern monarch population have seen significant declines, with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by much as 90%. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems, and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. And whereas, every resident of Wheat Ridge can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, and play. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge has committed to a future of sustainable environmental outcomes, with programs such as Sustainable Wheat Ridge and Regenerate Wheat Ridge. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do call upon the city of Wheat Ridge to join us in recognizing July 14th, 2025, today, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day, in the city of Wheat Ridge, and encourage all residents to participate in community activities that support and celebrate monarch conservation, dated this 14th day of July, 2025. Mary, I'm pleased to give you this, and would you like to say a few words? Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. I really just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your continued support towards our sustainability programming and efforts, including the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. That's a topic that's not only important to the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee, but to me as well. And we are just excited to continue working to preserve and create new pollinator-friendly habitat throughout the city, and also continuing to try and educate the public on what they can do to help out with those efforts as well. So just thank you so much again for all of your support.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Don't run away. We're going to have a... We're going to open up your certificate, and we've got a photo up. You go. Okay. Thanks so much. We are pleased to have a short video to start our next presentation, which is a celebration coming to us from the Wheat Ridge Historical Society, and I want to thank you all for being here. So cue it up and run it when it's... I'm Dan Larson, member of the Wheat Ridge City Council representing District 4. Today, I'd like to introduce you to the latest feature at Wheat Ridge Historical Park. Completed in May, 2025, the Giant Pascal Celery mural reminds us of our past. It connects us with our agricultural heritage and the people who built our community. Red brick building that now anchors the entrance of Wheat Ridge Historical Park has had a rich and colorful past. It started life in 1912 in farmer Fred Bunker's apple orchard as a tiny grocery store just east of what is today 38th Avenue and Teller Street. But Bunker had bigger ideas. He applied to open the area's first post office. Woodrow Wilson's administration approved the application, and Bunker became the first postmaster. By the 1930s, 38th Avenue had become the center of a thriving town. After the post office was decommissioned, the building served the school across the street as a lunch counter before it housed the city's first barber shop and later the area's first library. When we jump ahead to the 1980s, 38th Avenue had changed dramatically. A false front combined all the old storefronts into one long gray building. The city decided a facelift was in order. Some of the buildings would have to be demolished. The old post office would have been demolished were it not for the discovery of a legal notice in the 1989 Wheat Ridge Sentinel newspaper. An investigation revealed boarded-up windows and a dirty gray facade. Residents supported an effort to update the neighborhood. The Wheat Ridge Historical Society, led by Claudia Worth, a former City Council member, petitioned the council to reconsider removal of the building. When that was unsuccessful, Worth hatched a plan to restore the building's charm. Before daybreak on a spring weekend in 1990, Miss Worth's office would reside among mature pine trees at the entrance to the park. In January 1992, the building was moved into the place where it resides today. It took several months to clean out and three additional years to refurbish, but they got her done. In 1996, Wheat Ridge Mayor Dan Wild cut the ribbon at the grand opening during the May festival. Work continues today to organize and preserve the archives and memorabilia collected over time. Those include artifacts related to the area's early settlers, their descendants, and the area's history. The latest chapter in the post office history was written this year with the creation of a stylized mural created by a world-renowned muralist for the Wheat Ridge Historical Society. Mark and his wife Rose arrived on Thursday, May 1st, and immediately started to work. The first step was covering the wall with a thick white sealant. On Sunday evening, an outline of the design was projected onto the wall. Mark, his wife, and other family members rushed to trace the lines with magic marker to provide guidelines for the painting. Early Monday morning, Mark was mixing paint on site. The actual painting did not cease until nightfall each evening and continued for many days. The letters of the title were completed using a special technique called pouncing, which was used by Michelangelo during the Renaissance. Charcoal dust is forced through perforated paper stencils on top of dry paint. This then provides a letter outline on the surface to be filled in later. Members of the community who attended the 2025 May Festival watched as the mural painters steadily and carefully painted the various sections of the design. One of the last touches was the artist's name added to the sign at the lower right-hand corner. The mural includes additional references to local history. The wagon is based on a picture found in the Wheat Ridge Historical Society archives. The name on the wagon is Henry Lee, the early settler who owned a farm supply store. The man driving the wagon is Bert White. The bird perched on the celery sign is a lark bunting, the Colorado state bird. The Giant Pascal Celery mural connects us with the past. It reminds us of our shared agricultural heritage and the people who built our community. Thank you. Great, great video. And I would like to invite Martha Hetty, who is the Wheat Ridge Historical Society Publications Director, to join me up here, and the following folks also. Don Wood, who's the Vice President of the WRHS. Bonnie Botham is the Treasurer. Barbara Bankovich is the Secretary. We have members of our Parks and Recreation Team and members of the Cultural Commission. Martha, would you join me? Here you are. Hi, how are you? Good. Thanks for joining us today.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Please.
Excuse me. Well, the painting that you see right here was done by local boy Mark Otis, who you just saw in the video. He's a graduate of Wheat Ridge High School in 1968, grew up here, played in all the ditches, so forth. We asked him... My husband and I knew him in college, and we kind of went, "What ever happened to that guy that was a sign painter?" We Googled him. "Guy's all over the world." I mean, he's done stuff everywhere, worked for Disney, et cetera. Anyway, we invited him. He said he would be absolutely charmed. And he and his wife came back, stayed with their daughter in Lakewood. The work was completed in May, but he was hard at work last fall and throughout the winter. He would send us examples of, you know, "What do you think of this? And how about we do this?" and so forth. So it was really a cooperative effort. When the Historical Society Board voted on the final content, we took it immediately to the Parks and Rec Commission, and the Cultural Commission got their okay for content and so forth. They said thumbs up right away. And he brought with him four different studies. They all look the same to me, but the largest one is this, and he uses these to make sure that the content is exactly the same as was planned, and the colors are true. So what you see when you go to the mural itself is going to have the same thing, exact hues and so forth. He used a fall palette for this, because that's when you harvest celery. The only difference... I'm not going to tell you what the only difference is. You have to go look at the mural, and then you come look at this and see if you can find the difference. It's real obvious to me. He constantly referred to those, the different studies, as he painted. And he reported at the end of it that he always donates the largest of the... The rest of them are small. This is the only big one. And he always donates that to be hung somewhere prominently in the city. We hope that's exactly what will happen with this one. At first glance, you may think that it's a cartoon with that giant celery plant hanging out the back. So we've also provided an explanation of everything in here, including a write-up on Mark himself, and this should hang real close to that. We'd like to thank Karen O'Donnell and the Parks and Recreation Committee, or Commission, I'm sorry, and the crews that take care of the park, because they really took care of us during that whole process. They were right there with everything that we requested. Also Kathleen Martel and the Cultural Commission for their support and their guidance, and our dear liaison with the city, Brandon Altenberg, for his unceasing willingness to solve our problems, give us advice, and cheer us on. We hope to see the painting displayed prominently here, or there, or... We just don't want it in the back of some conference room. We want people to see it, because then we want people to immediately be curious enough to drive over north of the pickleball courts. The pickleball courts keep seducing our visitors. We know that they do. If they just go north and take a look, then they could join. And you all could join too. Thank you.
Don't run away. Do some photos. Oh, yeah. We got you. We got you. Yeah? Yeah, come on. Come on. All right.
Oh, yeah. He eats. Oh, my audience. Oh, well. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Our next... The next item on our agenda is the public's right to speak. This is an opportunity for the public to come and speak on any item that is not on the agenda for three minutes to address the council. When I call your name, if you would please come to the podium, introduce yourself, give us your first name and your last name. If you'd please spell your last name so we get it right in the public record, we would appreciate that. And our first speaker tonight is Valerie Beck. Want to tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge?
Hi, everybody. I'm Valerie Beck. This is Talia Beck and Coco Beck. We live in Wheat Ridge, and do we need to give our address?
No, but spell your last name.
Okay. Beck, B-E-C-K.
Okay.
And we also work in Wheat Ridge. Okay. So we were coming to talk about Anderson Pool and also thank people for all of the work that went into making sure that the Lutheran campus is going to be something for families. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight, but we were here, and they were showing the celery mural, and we're so excited the whole time through that entire video. Thank you, Counselor Larson, for narrating, and thank you, Martha, and the Historical Society. But Talia and Coco's great, great grandparents were celery farmers, were Pascal celery farmers here in Wheat Ridge. And so we got to see that tonight and just be so proud of our town. And we love that mural, and so thanks. So thank you so much. Also, we are here to talk about Anderson Pool and how special it is to us, and how important it is for people to fill out the survey. I think... I don't even know when the survey closes, but just get it done. Do it today, please. Both the girls were swimming at Anderson today. It's a hop, skip, and a jump. It's so convenient for families, and it's packed every day. This is such a resource for us. And we also are on the Wheat Ridge Piranhas Swim Team. I'm on the board, and we are hosting the league championships at Anderson Pool this year. So that is a big revenue generator. We're having pizzas brought in from Pietras and Get Right's sending over some cinnamon rolls. It's a great community event, and I think there's going to be 800 people at Anderson this weekend. So maybe steer clear if you want to, but also we're going to be using that as an opportunity to get people to fill out that survey. It's really important. Girls, do you have anything that you want to say about Anderson Pool?
I like how it's always around the corner from my house.
That's what we've got for tonight, but thanks again to the Historical Society, and thanks everybody in the community for showing up for really great places like Lutheran's Campus and what that's going to be, and also Anderson Pool. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Beck family, for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. That's all of the folks that I have signed up to speak. With that, we will go to our first agenda item. This is Agenda Item Number One, the Mayor Pro Tem Stites. Would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 13-2025, an ordinance amending Section 11-561 and 11-569 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the hotel licensing program. At issue on April 7th, 2025, staff provided the required 18-month update to council regarding the hotel licensing program that was established October 25th, 2021. Council requested an amendment to the code so that the 18-month update is no longer required, but rather provided as deemed necessary by the council. Additionally, and subsequent to the April 7th discussion, staff realized that with the dissolution of the severe weather shelter network, the calls for service, CFS definition, must be updated to more accurately reflect when CFS are excluded from the count so that hotels that provided shelter during the severe weather can still benefit from the exclusion of these calls and their monthly calculations. The attached ordinance accomplishes both of these code amendments.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2025, an ordinance amending Section 11-561 and 11-569 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the hotel licensing program. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, July 28th, 2025, at 6:30 PM as a virtual... Sorry. As a virtual meeting and in City Council chambers, 7,500 West 29th Avenue, and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication as provided by Section 5.1... Or 5.11 of the Charter.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Dozeman. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will go now to Agenda Item Number Two. Counselor Snell, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number 35-2025, a resolution approving an inter-agency data sharing agreement. At issue, the JFCO Homeless Navigation Collaborative would like to extend access to Colorado Homeless Management Information Systems, HMIS, data to Family Tree by collectively entering into an inter-agency data sharing agreement.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yes, Mary Schilling. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant City Manager, will give an update on this.
Okay. Ms. Schilling.
Great. Thank you. This is pretty straightforward, and I'm probably going to give you a little bit too much information, but I want to make sure you understand all the ins and outs of this. So what's been happening historically is that when Wheat Ridge created the navigation program in 2020, we entered into a partner-agency agreement with the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, MDHI. They're our continuum of care in the Denver region. And that is regarding the use of the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS. So all of the agencies as part of the JFCO Navigation Collaborative all individually entered into these partnerships with MDHI to make sure everyone was really careful with the data that they're collecting when they're working with the folks experiencing homelessness. And you've seen some of the data that's in there. Historically, some of the demographic reports that our navigators would provide would include some of that information, so general demographics, duration, frequency of homelessness, things like history with substance use, mental health status, veteran status, all that self-disclosed by the individuals. Also includes things like services received, referrals, notes, things like that. So prior to tonight, what was happening is that when a navigator were to work with somebody who was interested in the program, they would do an intake process. They would do a release of information, ROI, into... That would allow other programs as part of the collaborative to access that data. So what that means is, you know, you might meet someone, and then you can find out if they maybe worked with a different agency historically, which really helps with the continuity of their care. It didn't allow the navigators to poll countywide numbers. It just allows you to access that individual's file. So what's happening now as part of this agreement is that we would be able to access, we'd be able to pull reports countywide as part of the collaborative. Additionally, Family Tree is now doing the outreach process for our data. So that is something our navigators do, weekly outreach, to get to know the folks experiencing homelessness, see if they were interested in being part of our program. Family Tree is doing that now. So as they're entering the data, that number is not being part of the collaborative, because they are not in the collaborative. So what we would like is for Family Tree to be able to enter into the collaborative's partnership agreement with MDHI, and in doing so, we want to collectively have a data sharing agreement with all agencies. So that is this resolution, is to create the data sharing agreement with all agencies.
Okay. Very...
Thank you.
I think that was pretty clear, so. I think that was pretty clear, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
I have no members of the public signed up to speak on this item, so I will go to questions from council. Do we have any questions? Counselor Weaver?
I was just curious, is this data treated like HIPAA data, like health data, in that is it securely thought about between the interagencies? And could you just speak to kind of how it's kept and the level of security, just for people's knowledge?
Yes, the partner agency agreement that we entered into in 2021 specifically calls out what you can do with this level of data. And so even right now, our law enforcement doesn't have access to this data. They're not allowed entry into the data. That's one of the reasons why those who were on historically, it's why our navigation program is held within the city manager's office and not within PD, because they wouldn't be able to enter into the data, into HMIS because of that. So it's very mindfully kept. The ROIs are also really careful in that the clients are, they are not obligated to share their information with anyone. It's just helpful when you're kind of working between agencies to be able to share certain information. If you have a voucher, you can just kind of move a little bit more quickly. But yes, the data and MDHI, they manage very carefully.
And just to follow up, so probably not everybody has access to this data. Just because we're in this data sharing agreement, it doesn't mean everybody who works for Wheat Ridge can pull that data.
I don't have access to this data.
It means that...
Our navigators have access to the data only. They've taken the training on how to enter the data and they've taken the agreement on how to be careful.
Yep, and that's true for all the other agencies as well.
Exactly. Thank you. Great question.
Thank you. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And first off, I have to believe that Family Tree is probably one of the most, more outstanding agencies in the metro area for providing this sort of service. So there's no question about their integrity and their ability to conform to the things that we're asking. Are there other non-municipal agencies that are involved?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
Okay. And there was a note about the person being interviewed, being able to opt out. How does that work?
It's when they're filling out their release of information form, there's all the different agencies that they have the option to provide releases to. And so they can say, no, we don't want Family Tree, or no, we don't want any of the other agencies within the county to be able to pull that. So for the most part, they generally do opt in, but they always have the ability to opt out at any time.
So if you're interviewed here in Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge would have the information, but nobody else would?
If that's the choice of the client, yes.
Okay. And also, so I'm clear, when one of our navigators is investigating, working with somebody, do they see the entire file or can they only see certain parts of it in terms of the services that were offered, that sort of thing?
That's exactly it. So they can see the high-level services that were offered, but they can't see the notes on the services that were offered, the specific services that they received. They can see a kind of high level. If we're looking at other agencies within our, if it's their client, they can see all the data.
Oh, if the person they're interviewing is their client, then they would be able to access the information about services provided in the past by another agency?
They, it is confusing. If it's our client, or if we are doing an intake on our client and we look up and they have already received services somewhere else, so they already have a file, they can see the high level of the services, but they can't see like the notes of what another navigator has said. Yeah.
Okay. And, yeah, no, that answers the question. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, Counselor Snell, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 35-2025, A Resolution Approving an Inter-Agency Data Sharing Agreement.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no, none, will the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number three. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve appointments to boards, commissions and committees. At issue in June of 2025, the resignation of two cultural commission and one planning commission member was received leaving vacancies on those commissions. In addition, during the review period, it was realized that a planning commissioner member currently serving in a District Four seat resides in District One. Staff proposes moving a District Four member into the correct District One vacancy and pointing a new member into the District Four seat. Includes the reapportment of an existing planning commissioner to the district in which they reside. There are four appointments to make at this meeting.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Counselor Ohm, may I ask you to make the motion for the District Two council seat?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have one question before I do that. On the, I noticed on the application by Sherry, it says Altland, but then it also, it was filled out as Altland. Is it Altland or is it Atland? Because the, in the applicant summary, it says AT instead of ALTland. I'd just like to know, is it ALTland or is it ATLND for the last name?
Thanks for catching that, Counselor. I would go with Altland, as that's what she wrote in her application. And we can, we'll verify that.
Thank you.
I think that's right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Altland?
Yes. ALTland.
Thank you.
Thank you. So anyway, if you would continue.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Sherry Altland to the District Two Cultural Commission vacancy seat, term to expire March 2, 2026.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. And Counselor Weaver, may I have you please make the motion on the District Three?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Bobby Rubino to the District Three Cultural Commission vacancy seat, term to expire March 2, 2027.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council? Thank you. That completes our agenda items tonight, so let us turn to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates this evening. I do have a graphic up on your monitors. As we discussed at the June 16 study session, the city issued a letter of intent to purchase property located on West 44th Avenue for the expansion and consolidation of the Public Works and Parks Shops. A contract was also submitted to the seller, but the seller failed to sign the contract by the required date. They have since signed, but we are technically out of a contract. However, in the meantime, the city was contacted by the property owner of another parcel for sale, that's adjacent to the current Public Works Shops. That is parcel B on your graphic. Parcel A was the original parcel that we were looking at purchasing. Parcel B is $1 million less than parcel A that we were originally going to purchase and it's about 25,000 square feet bigger. We've submitted a letter of interest to the property owner of parcel B. I just wanted to give you a heads up this evening to make sure that there weren't any major concerns for moving forward in this direction instead of the original direction. Any questions on that?
Don't see any questions on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Exciting update on the American motel. Excel Energy is starting work this Wednesday. Don't hold your breath, but we're hoping this Wednesday on reinforcement work that is required to increase the power supply for the I-70 Kipling area. The American has issued its notice to proceed to their demo company, demolition company, to start abatement and demolition of the motel. Demo should take about five months and construction of the new apartments will start after that. So excited, exciting. Yes, ma'am. Any questions?
Can we gather when the wrecking ball?
We will do a public announcement. We'll let you know what that's going to look like.
Can we go over there?
We'll let you know what we're planning.
Okay.
We want to be respectful of our business community and the community, but it is a major milestone that we do want to celebrate in the cleanup of that corridor, so we'll let you know what we'll do.
Thank you.
I had a question. Is the big flag spoken for?
Well, we could ask the owner. Yeah, I know, people have been asking.
I'm not sure what we would do with it.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I have.
All right, very good. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go to elected officials matters and start with Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. We, for our monthly idea committee meeting, we welcomed a new member and her name is Haley Meredith. We're very glad to have her. We're up to full strength there, so we are underway with some plans and just have a great group and have some good momentum going there. And then I'd also just like to recognize Colorado State poet laureate Andrea Gibson passed away this evening, or this morning. An incredible poet. We were very fortunate as a state to have them as a poet. And just, if you have a moment, just take a look at some of their work. Very, very moving poetry on just the human condition and how we are coexisting together. So thoughts to their family and friends and that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I actually came from a Carnation Festival Board meeting right directly before city council and I just wanted to remind everyone that the 56th Annual Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival is Friday, August 8, Saturday, August 9, and Sunday, August 10. We will be having a carnival with a bunch of rides, the traditional spaghetti dinner, music, beer gardens that support all of our service organizations, and the parade on Saturday morning. Registration for the parade closes on July 26. So if you are interested in participating this year, please get signed up and tell your family and friends and join us at the pancake breakfast at 7:00 AM at The Grange before the parade and we're looking forward to having it. Thanks.
And is there a circus this year?
There is not a circus this year, no.
All right, good. We're looking forward to being there.
Yeah, hopefully we'll do fireworks, so long as we don't have a fire ban this year. Pray for rain.
Thank you. Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And being in how we're in the thick of summertime right now, the only thing going on for years truly was a little weekend vacation to a place, I always try to go to someplace on my motorcycle that I've never been. So this summer it was Dodge City, Kansas, and I can say that the corn is high, the wheat is turned brown and livestock is still there.
Was there a sheriff in town?
I did get to see the gunfight and that was the highlight.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. I was invited by YY Dennis to give a little education on water conservation at Happiness Gardens last Wednesday with Susan Bennett. And we had a small turnout, but it was really good as I got to share some of my professional experience on drip irrigation and soil and water. And those are definitely some things that I hold dear as far as water conservation. It was a good discussion. And some of the people that were there found it very helpful just seeing some of the, I brought a whole bunch of parts instead of me just talking for an hour. And so there's a lot of questions and I thought it went really well and I was glad that we had some, had some people showing up to learn about, you know, what to do for their homes and for the garden. And then on another note, I don't know who's planting it in my yard, but I have several milkweed. I suspect it's the rabbits. But I now am the proud owner of, I don't know, four or five different milkweeds. I have not cut them down. I've patiently waiting for the monarchs to see those. And I'm seeing a lot of them around, so somebody's, somebody's, I think, planting all those milkweeds. Thank you.
Well, YY said she would save me some seeds and they go in the ground, she said, in November, so looking forward to doing that. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you. What a neat presentation about the mural. I had a couple of questions. Could we make a postcard, a Wheat Ridge postcard with this image on it? And how would we go about doing that and getting permissions and I just think that would be super cool.
Sure, we'll look into that. That's a great idea.
Yeah. And I also was in Missoula, Montana last week and they have little banners on their city. They are also a tree city. I think I sent you a picture. And it says, Water Your Trees. And it's sponsored by Park and Rec. It's sponsored by, and it seemed to me like that would be a really, really great message to get out to people that trees need to be watered more than just their lawn if we want to keep our tree canopy. So I will be happy to send the picture to any of you, but it was just a, you know, it was just like a good reminder, like, don't forget your tree, is they're really important. And let's see, what else? Yeah, I could, I could talk for hours on the history stuff of Wheat Ridge and we should, we should do more of this. Just to remind everybody, the concept of truck farming came from this kind of thing where trucks would drive into a main city like Denver and they would take all of their produce to the DeNargo Market, which was taken down in the last 10 years, 15 years. But when you go down to DeNargo Street where all the new condos and apartments are, that's the old market street that the truck farms from Wheat Ridge would go down to. So anyway, I will stop talking about that. But that was very cool and thanks for that presentation.
And a lot of those families still in the area?
Yeah, it makes me want to go out and talk to some of them. Though I have to tell you, I'm sorry, I'm going to talk a little bit more about Pascal celery. I heard a story from Mr. Fico, who is my neighbor across the way, and he could have been pulling my leg, but now we have to find out. Because I also heard that Pascal celery, Pascal meaning Easter, planted in Easter, it's a spring crop, that true Pascal celery is grown underneath like hay and a, it's white. And so it's meant to be like, it's kind of a delicacy. And so I'd like to know if anybody knows of any history around that. I know I can also call the Historical Society. So I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to say thank you to the Wheat Ridge Historical Society for coming in tonight. They've done an amazing job over there. It was really cool. Counselor Larson narrating the video, but some of us who've known Claudia Worth for a long time, it's really cool to see her get some of her just dues for all that she's done in the city. She's an amazing woman and very strong-willed individual if you've ever had to go against her for anything. We've had a couple of ribbon cuttings over the last couple of weeks. I was able to cut the ribbon up at Bricks and Minifigs, which is up at the Applewood Shopping Center. It's used Legos, really cool store. My eight-year-old's going to love it in there. He builds it, never touches it again, so we're going to get rid of it and give him something else to build and never touch again. And then Alchemy of Spirit Wellness, which is over on 38th Avenue, over in District One. Jen O'Darka is pretty fantastic and everybody that she's got working in there, pretty great. Last week I was able to cut the ribbon for Heidi's Brooklyn Deli, which is a fantastic restaurant over at the Gold's Marketplace, as well as Station Dental, who we stole from Lakewood recently. So it's good to have them. They told me they're going to be jumping in the parade. So great addition to Wheat Ridge. And then Dogtopia, which has been around for a while, but does an awesome business there. So we've got some great businesses in Wheat Ridge and we've got the Business of the Year Breakfast. And by the way, city councilors, we need to come up with a council partnership award nominee here very quickly as well. So I'll send you guys an email about that. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. If you can find it, find it, buy it, Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege. Last month, our family suffered a great tragedy with the death of our second son. The Wheat Ridge Police Department, the West Metro Fire and Rescue, Jefferson County Human Services and other county agencies responded quickly, professionally and with great compassion. We want to thank them for all they did and how they did it. We received a hot pouring of support from our city staff, elected officials and the broader Wheat Ridge community. This has been an incredible loss for our family. This has been an incredible loss for our family. We would like to say thank you for all the expressions of love and support we have received. Thank you. So I don't believe we have any more business to come before council, but if you will drive safely and slowly through our city so that everyone gets home tonight the way they need to be, we will stand adjourned.